I'd like to call this meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order and ask Mr. Steve Johnson if he'll do the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Father, once again, we come to you in asking for wisdom and insight, and we have a brief agenda tonight, but that doesn't mean that the items on here are not worthy of our careful consideration. I pray, Father, that you will enlighten our minds, that we'll make the right decision. And, Father, I just pray that everything we do, say, or even think here tonight will honor your son, the Lord Jesus, and it will bless the folks of this county, for it's in Christ's name we ask it. Amen.
In addition to that, I'd like to ask everyone to please remember the Harry Tumas family and what they're going through this week. This terrible thing happened, and, of course, Harry is a member of our planning board. Now, if you please stand for pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mashburn, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And commissioners, have any adjustments?
No motion.
Okay, is there a motion? We accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion's been made. That we accept the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. This public hearing is rezoning case number 0910-1, applicant Todd Jurett for the China Grove Restaurant Group, request to be rezoned, 4.03 acres located at 1111 River Highway, Mooresville, North Carolina, from Neighborhood Business Conditional Use District to Neighborhood Business Conditional District. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This is a four, just over a four acre tract. It's located on Highway 150 at the corner of River Park Road, which goes into a business park between McCrory and Highway 150. This is a case that's come up before this board back in 2002. We rezoned it back in 2002 to N B C U D. This was our old Conditional Use District zoning. And as part of that rezoning, we had a number of conditions on the request. And what the applicant is looking to do is change some of those conditions and allow a use that was prohibited in many ways, but not expressly, and try and clean up the situation, basically. The conditions that we have attached to this request, basically those that the applicant has, some of which he has volunteered and some that we have kept from the old case, are as follows. There will be no metal facades on any sides of the building. Brick, stone, split face block, and stucco will be the primary materials for the facade of the building. Access to the property will remain as shown on rezoning site, on the rezoning site plan, even if it's subdivided in the future. And I'll get to that plan in just a minute. This, as you can see from the zoning map, this parcel is surrounded by either residential office, shopping center, general business, generally a commercial area designated as commercial corridor in our 2030 plan. The site plan that we have shows that, this is Highway 150, shows that there will be no entrance coming off of Highway 150, that the only entrance will be coming off River Park Road, which is, again, a side street. This is not even a state road. This is a private road at this point. They're going to bring the traffic in from River Park to the backside of the property to access what could be three potential businesses. And from an access management standpoint, that is probably one of the better ways to deal with the traffic on Highway 150, and something we were trying to achieve back in 2002 when we went through this the first time. The proposed uses would be, in the Phase 1, a three bay automated car wash. This is not something that you would have attendance and, actually, not something that you would even have people coming out and washing their own car manually. And I think the applicant can give you a little more details on that. The other uses would be commercial, retail, or commercial office, but basically something commercial in nature that would be allowable under the Neighborhood Business designation, which is our least intrusive of all of our business designations. This parcel's in the watershed, being down on Highway 150 and relatively close to the lake. They were given 82,764 square feet of coverage several years ago through a high-density option that was approved by the commissioners for the entire River Park area. Each of the parcels in River Park, several years ago, were given a specific square footage that they can cover, which applies to this parcel as well. I'll go through several photos of the property. I'm sure you're all familiar with Highway 150. This is at the corner of River Park Road. Right now, property is vacant, been graded off, and that's the only work that I'm aware of that's taken place. These are several apartment buildings that are located on the backside, on the south side of this property. Been there for, I would estimate, 10 years, eight to 10 years. This is River Park Road. There's some office development and some lighter industrial types of uses, warehousing, things of that nature in the backside of River Park. This is looking west, out towards the lake, and, again, this is the piece of property actually across River Park. It's graded off, owned by Greg Biffle, if I'm not mistaken. No development plans on it, but definitely looks like it is ready to be developed. And that's actually the signed for lease. And this is looking across 150. Again, more commercial uses. And finally, the People's Bank that is in the town of Mooresville. This was annexed several years ago and built under the town's standards, so there's water and sewer, to my knowledge, out to that piece. The applicant is not looking to utilize Mooresville utilities, therefore, they're looking to go through with the entire development process under Iredell County. Based on the fact that they meet our 2030 plan, they've, in my opinion, they're handling the traffic very well, and their site plan is something that I wish we saw more of. We are recommending in favor of this, and the planning board recommended unanimously also. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, Ms. Smith? Along that backside where those apartments are, or houses, what type of barrier do they plan to put there?
Well, we would require that a vegetative buffer be put in that would eventually get up to 10 feet in height. There is a separation that would be required as well, because it is a residential use. You can see from the site plan that they're proposing more of a tree line than what we're requiring, but we're, you know, we're definitely going to require some vegetation. The issue with that backside is, you know, in general, the second stories of the apartment, you're not going to be able to do too much that's going to totally block their view, in my opinion. You're going to have to wait many years if trees are planted for them to get high enough to actually do that, because if you're looking from this area out, you know, you're still going to see something. But because this is a transitional corridor, because that property's always been designated, you know, generally for some sort of commercial use, it's one of those factors that's going to happen, and we'll try and mitigate it how we can.
Right now, the only business going in will be the car wash, correct?
That's the first phase, and the other two will come eventually, but I think that's the first phase. And I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about that. He can give you some specifics.
Just to me, if you mentioned about the utilities, what kind of a situation is that?
Well, and again, this is one I'll defer, but right now, this is going to be on, well, I'll let him go into details about it, but it will not utilize water and sewer from the town of Mooresville at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to speak?
Good evening. My name's Todd Surratt, and I'm the gentleman that has plans to develop the property. To answer a couple of your questions, with respect to future businesses that I would see there, my goal would be, even though I have no crystal ball and I can't tell you exactly what might go there, my goal would be office, banking, you know, something of that nature would be developed on the balance of the property. As far as the car wash goes, I will be using the water service from Aqua, which services the River Park area. However, one thing that I'll be doing at this car wash is that I'll be recycling 100% of my water, so I will not have a sewer need. It's a relatively new system where I'm able to recycle in essence 100% of my water. There'll be a little bit of water usage, but it'll be continually, you know, cycled back through the car wash system, so there will not be any sewer discharge at all, if that answers your question there. All part of this, you know, going green and being environmentally friendly and so. Okay. I'd be happy to answer any other questions. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I call this meeting to be in a public hearing on this rezoning case number 091-1. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning case, you have your opportunity to speak at this time. Hearing none, I declare this public hearing closed, and I entertain a motion.
Chairman, motion to accept.
There is a motion to accept the rezoning. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries 5-0. Second item, consideration of a financed installment agreement for Mitchell Community College, Mooresville Campus Building Project, and the Union Grove Elementary School Project. Ms. Blumstein?
Good evening. I just wanted to talk to you for a minute about the proposed financing for Mitchell Community College. This is to construct and equip 17 general classrooms and a multi-use classroom at the Mooresville campus. We've talked about this since about December of last year and the potential of needing to borrow approximately $2,785,000 plus closing costs for this project. Other financing sources have been identified, including about $1.4 million remaining from the 2006 General Obligation Bond, $900,000 from the North Carolina Community College Fund. There's funds in our fund balance, as well as the college's fund balance, and $300,000 in grants that they've received, 250 from Lowe's Corporation, and I believe 50,000 from Randy Marion for this classroom building. At the last board meeting, we determined it would be in the best interest of the county to combine this with an installment financing agreement for Union Grove Elementary School. Those requests for proposals have been sent to the banks and they're due back tomorrow. So I'll be coming to you if you adopt the financing resolution tonight. Tomorrow, I will submit the application to the local government commission to get on the agenda, and I'll continue to feed documentation to them between now and the end of the month to proceed with this financing. Mitchell College, we do have plenty of funds identified in the current year revenue stream and future revenue streams to cover this debt service that will not require a tax increase or any other change in the funding method.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Blumstein?
Ms. Blumstein, I assume you're going to get proposals from several financial institutions, and then you're going to come back with a recommendation who we should go with?
Yes, sir, I will. They are due in tomorrow, and it's your meeting on the 17th. I'll be making a recommendation. If you would like for me to, I'll be glad to send out the results of the tabulation after they're received. I sent it to five institutions: RBC, First Citizens, Wachovia Wells Fargo slash Wells Fargo, Bank of America, and, let's see, anyway, five.
What time?
And I've already had two say decline to that they would not be offering a proposal: RBC Bank and Wachovia.
What timeframe will you, you think, it'll take to get this back?
They're due back to me tomorrow. I sent them out two weeks ago when the board authorized for me to go ahead and move ahead with Union Grove to receive financing proposals, and we can save closing costs to do this as one deal instead of multiple deals.
Wish you knew everything by Friday, then, right?
Yes, sir. If you'd like to know what the bids are, I'll be glad to send that tabulation out, and then I'll come to you on the 17th, probably with the first, with the recommendation, as well as the first set of financing documents. We hope to have this closed by the third week of December. It'll be heard by the local government commission on December 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I now declare this meeting to be in a public hearing for consideration of a financed installment agreement for Mitchell Community Colleges, Mooresville Campus Building Project, and Union Grove Elementary School Project. Is anyone here who wishes to speak either for or against these projects? Hearing none, I declare this public hearing closed, and I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to adopt the resolution making certain findings relating to the financing of certain community college facilities and certain school facilities pursuant to an installment financing agreement and authorizing the director of finance to file application for approval thereof by the local government commission.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Mashburn, would you do the administrative matters, please?
Okay. The first item under administrative matters is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 26 pertaining to the Mooresville graded schools. Ms. Blumstein will make that presentation.
Thank you. In the current year's budget, we had budgeted $548,000 lottery proceeds to assist in the debt service payments for Mooresville graded schools. This is debt that the county has issued on their behalf. We were notified in August that the state is going to take 2/3 of our beer and wine tax proceeds next May, of which part of that was appropriated this year to Mooresville and Iredell Stateville. So we want to substitute that beer and wine tax with lottery proceeds. In addition, Mooresville has requested $75,000 to help with some roofing repairs that they did not anticipate. And keep in mind, this year's general fund budget appropriation for Mooresville only covered their debt service. There were no additional funds for ongoing capital, and that's why they're requesting their $75,000 for roofing repairs. Ms. Haas could not be here tonight. She's out of town.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead.
You said that the state of North Carolina is, they're reducing by 2/3 or reducing by 1/3?
They're reducing by 2/3.
Okay. And will we get that money back at a later time?
No.
Okay. Just want everybody to be aware that the Republican Board of County Commissioners is not cutting the education allotment to the school system. It's a Democratic General Assembly, a Democratic State Senate, and a Democratic governor that did this, okay? So whenever people say that Republicans are against education, people just need to remember this, what happened, okay?
Thank you.
We get blamed. We might as well lay the blame where it belongs.
Well said, Ken. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, for a motion, we approve this request.
Motion to approve this budget amendment. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries 5-0.
The next item is a request of approval of the CVS Caremark Minute Clinic as an accepted in-network provider for the county health plan through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Our acting HR Director Cynthia Eads will make that presentation.
Good evening. The first item I have on the agenda for your consideration is the addition of CVS Minute Clinics to our in-network group of providers under the county health plan. If you approve this, the Minute Clinics would be available for our covered members beginning January 1st of 2010. The addition of the Minute Clinics as an in-network provider would provide two types of savings in the county. The first type of savings would be for the health plan itself. The average cost savings per visit to a Minute Clinic can range anywhere on the low end from $46 per visit, on the upper end to about $460 per visit to the Minute Clinic, as opposed to a visit to an alternative facility such as an emergency room, an urgent care center, or even your personal family care physician. The second savings that could be achieved would be for the covered members themselves. There is no co-pay for a visit to the Minute Clinic. There is no co-pay that is designed to increase the utilization of the Minute Clinics as opposed to utilization of the more expensive alternatives that I mentioned: emergency room, urgent care, or personal care physician visit. This is very similar to what we do with our prescription drug care coverage. The co-pay for generics is lower than the co-pay for a name brand drug. This then drives up the use of the less expensive generic prescriptions and drives down the use of the more expensive name brand prescriptions, which results in a savings for the county health plan and helps contain the cost of the prescription drug care program. So the elimination of the co-pay for the Minute Care Clinics is designed to do the same thing. There's more information in your packet from, there's a letter from the Association of County Commissioners that gives a little bit more detail about the Minute Clinics. I'll be happy to go into more detail. I will just point out that they really are designed to treat non-emergency health issues, anything from fever, strep throat, cough, the flu, sprain, acne, those sorts of issues. They are staffed by physician assistants or a family nurse practitioner. No appointment is necessary for a visit. You just walk in, and I went to the clinic on, it's on River Highway in Mooresville. I went there Saturday just to sort of look around, and you walk in, and it's immediately to your right, there's a great big sign that says CVS Minute Clinic. There's no receptionist. There's a group of about six or seven chairs. You sit in, there's a computer kiosk. You go in and type your name to get yourself registered, and while I was there, there were, looked like, three patients waiting, and while I was sort of watching what was going on, physician's assistant or a nurse practitioner came out with one person and called the name of the next person, and they went back in. But that's sort of how it works. The Minute Clinics are open mirrors about what the CVS store would be open. They're open Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 7:30. On Saturday, it would be open from, I think it's 9:00 to 5:30, and on Sunday, 10:00 to 5:30. So it allows an employee a little bit more options on if you need, especially if you have a sick child or something like that, and you need a quick trip to a office, you have another option besides your emergency room or your urgent care, or even trying to get a doctor's appointment during working days. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Now, is Mooresville the only location?
It is, in Iredell County. It's the only location.
Do they plan to add more locations?
I did call the association, and at this time, they really do not have any plans to add any more clinics in the near future. They have the one in Iredell County. They have a couple. The closest next one would be in Huntersville. There's something in Forsyth County, but they are designed to be around sort of the metropolitan areas: Charlotte, Durham, Greensboro, Raleigh, and Forsyth County. So the only one we have is on that River Highway, the CVS there, and that's the only one that they plan to have. Now, that's not to say that, you know, a year from now, if that facility is overwhelmed with patients trying to access it, that they wouldn't look to broaden that, but right now, there's not any plans to do that.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made. Is any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Eads.
The next item is a request for approval of agreement with the Mountain State University to provide a 20% tuition reduction for county employees in exchange for twice yearly announcements in the county circle newsletter, participation in the county's annual wellness fair, and a lunch and learn information session. Ms. Eads will also make that presentation.
The next item I have is, as Mr. Mashburn said, for you to consider an agreement between Iredell County and Mountain State University. Mountain State University is based in Beckley, West Virginia. They have had a facility at the Hickory Metro Higher Educational Center for probably about the last two years. They have just recently opened a satellite campus in Mooresville, North Carolina. You may actually have seen that. It's located off of Exit 33. If you're going off of that exit, heading down towards Charlotte, if you look up to your right, there's a glass building, about six stories tall, blue glass, and it says Mountain State University, but that's their Mooresville campus. What they would like to do is to go and enter an agreement with Iredell County, and what they would do, their end of the bargain would be to provide any employee of ours that wanted to either pursue their four-year degree or their master's degree through Mountain State University, the employee could receive a 20% tuition discount. In exchange, Iredell County would allow Mountain State University, two times a year, to post an announcement in our county circle newsletter about the programs that they offer. We would allow them to have a table at our annual wellness fair, which is held one time a year, so that they could distribute some of their materials. We would allow them to place a poster on a bulletin board that talked about their programs that they offered, and then we would allow them to sponsor, one time a year, a lunch and learn session where an employee would come during their lunch hour and learn more in more detail about the programs that the university offers. The two sorts of programs that would be available for our employees, as I mentioned, would be, they offer a master's degree in strategic leadership. That program takes about 18 months to finish, and before you can be enrolled in it, you do have to already have a four-year degree. They also offer a BS degree in organizational leadership. That, again, takes about 18 months to finish. The employee does have to have 40 hours of prior college transfer credit that they could transfer to Mountain State University, and they have to have two years of work experience. The average cost of tuition for either one of these programs is about $12,000 for the entire program, so the 20% discount would entitle the employee to save about $2,400 for the whole of the program. I have a list of, if you're interested, of other places that have, in our area, that have signed or entered into an agreement with Mountain State. The town of Mooresville's done that. Lake Norman Regional Medical Center is. Carolina Medical Center has. And then, there's a good number, City of Hickory, Catawba County, Caldwell County, City of Newton, several places closer to the Hickory Metro Education Center have also entered into an agreement with Mountain State University. If you've got other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Is this an accredited institution?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
Any other questions? Chair, entertain some motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the agreement between the county and Mountain State University.
Okay, the motion's been made. Any other comments? Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And the last item is a request to approve the October 20th, 2009 minutes.
Is there a motion, we approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion's been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Animal Grievance Committee, one announcement. Nurse and Home Advisory Board, one announcement. Appointments to boards and commissions, Crossroads Behavioral Health Care, three appointments. I have, I'll be able to make that, those nominations that are probably there next meeting. I've got one that I'm still waiting on response to, so we should, we don't really have to have it before December anyway.
So you're just going to do all three at one time?
Yeah. I'll try to have it all next time. Unfinished business. New business. County manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, other than just a reminder about the session that is scheduled for eight o'clock Friday morning here at the South Wing Conference Room, right now, with the items that are on the agenda, which basically include budget overviews, the, and revenue projections, the UDO, that Mr. Smith will be making a presentation on that. Also, we do have an item being brought forward by the Recreation Advisory Commission concerning a donation, a possible donation to the county of some land and facility, and Mr. Woody will be making that presentation. And of course, there are, it's board's meeting, so there may be other items. Certainly, one of the things that we hope to gather from this is, as we proceed into the remaining portion of this year, and as we have a better handle on what the financial position of the, or condition of the county is, that you give us some guidance if there is a need to start looking for changes or reductions either this year or as we start planning for next year, what your priorities on those would be. So again, we anticipate no more than a half-day, we should be through by noon time.
Thank you.
We will have some breakfast.
Yes, sir.
It will not be a buffet, it'll probably be a bag, I don't know, we'll see.
Will we have chocolate milk?
Chocolate milk, okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion, we adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, stand to your feet.
I have a request.